Okay, all right. All right. Good evening and welcome. I'd like to call to order the North Bend City Council Work Session, North Bend Urban Renewal Agency Work Session, Joint Work Sessions for Monday, May 22nd at 4:30 here in the council chambers. After calling the meeting to order tonight and welcoming everybody here in the council and online, we have public comment. Macy, do we have anybody for public comment this evening? Okay, nobody online or in onsite, so we'll go ahead and move on to number three in the work session agenda, and that is the Animal Shelter Partners Barktoberfest sponsorship discussion. I believe we have a packet of information here too, and to our city administrator, did we have a speaker presentation?
Madam Mayor, and council allow me to introduce this particular agenda item. You'll see in here, there is a request from Ms. Julie, she is here and present. Staff does not have the authority to waive fees. Generally, if the city is a sponsor, that then gives us latitude. This came up last year, and it was in the 11th hour where the Barktoberfest realized that they actually had to have each of their vendors with permits inside the rented community building. And so Ms. Julie said that she wanted to do it and do it right this year and has asked if the vendor fee can be waived, so we can answer any questions on that. And if you had afford Ms. Julie, she can certainly come forth and answer any questions about this particular event. But it is a request to waive the vendor fees for this particular event that will occur in the community building.
Okay, all right. So Julie, did you want to come over, come forward and give a brief description? Or did the council have any questions? Think in the, so they ask, the ask is for the council to waive the fees. And page one, it says. Yeah, there is a microphone right here if you want to go ahead and come forward. So these would be the permit fees to that your, the ask is for us to waive the permit fees for the festival. Um, you guys have a business license fee?
And I have a lot of vendors that are small mom and pop that like to come support the animal shelter. And this is one of our, one of our main fundraisers. We had to table it during pandemic, obviously. So we're trying to get it back up and running. I don't know if you've been to the shelter lately, but we use the money to, we've refurbished buildings out there. We put a brand new front lawn on. That's more usable for the dogs to have in their dog run. We buy flea medicine, anything that the county can't afford or doesn't have the money in their general fund or budget for the shelter. Animal Shelter Partner picks up and does fundraising to help out that. So when I have business license on top of the fee, their fee goes directly to the shelter. Then it makes it hard for me to get vendors to come to the event. And we really like having it at the community center because it's indoors and we can lock the doors at night.
Gotcha. Okay. So do we have what that total amount would be?
So generally, so if you're a licensed business and you're outside the city and you do business in the city, then you're required to get a license inside of city. We also have a temporary vendor license. If I'm mistaken, it runs about sixty two fifty for the temporary license. And so it then compounds that based on the number of vendors they have that otherwise would need those licenses. Ms. Julie, do you know how many vendors that is?
We had about twenty one last year.
So somewhere between twelve to fifteen hundred.
And we're, we would be, is this a something that we would then, we're having the discussion tonight since it's a work session? And I'm just trying to get, I guess I can get a consensus from the council of what they would want to do. Is this?
Part of the money that we, is, is part of our projections for the budget? Like, do we expect?
Recounting on this money?
Yeah, did we count on this?
It sort of kind of hasn't come in, and there is another creative way to approach this. So I always like to present creative out of the box approaches. You may recall that when you do your revenue sharing, council member Pat Gall specifically asked if an emergency or something unforeseen comes up, that there's a little revenue sharing. So you could actually come and give that balance to them, and that would basically go back to the city and then you could waive the fees and that money would simply go back to our general fund. And we clear out that account. So there's another approach to it.
Yes, she was, Julie, you were saying there's about twenty three vendors.
Yeah, we had twenty one last year.
And would some of them already have, potentially some of them would already have permits?
Some could.
Some could. So let's just say you needed eighteen permits times twenty two dollars. You got the math on that?
He's got sixty two.
Or sixty two dollars times eighteen.
Now we have to have our ears checked.
Yes, please. Right? So, so we'd be looking at, if we did sixty two dollars times eighteen, they would be looking, that would take up all of that. The, we had set aside a thousand dollars. We sent us, set aside a thousand dollars of revenue sharing.
I think there was give or take, I forget what the exact amount, but you have until midnight, June thirtieth, figure out what to do with that. Otherwise, it just refers back to the general fund anyway.
Well, I think that's a perfect, yeah, I think that's a perfect spot to use that myself. You know? Yeah, I mean, this is, there you go.
So, um, and this could be up to how Barktoberfest wants to handle it, but we could make the decision to give the thousand dollars to Barktoberfest. And you could decide whether or not that you want to continue to charge the people or use that money to pay the vendor fees, right? I mean, that could be one way to handle it. So if we did do that, so I mean, Councilor Gall was the one that wanted to set that money aside, and I'm hearing him say that he thinks that's a great idea. What would be our next course of actions if we wanted to take that revenue sharing? Donate it to Barktoberfest and then let them decide if you want to pay people's fees or?
So what I would do is I would say to the council, we can put an item for tomorrow under the consent agenda for revenue sharing for Oktoberfest. What we'll do is authorize the waiver of this. We'll require city sponsorship, and then there'll be no additional action because the balance will simply just go into the general fund. So for that particular event, they'll be in the clear.
I think that's fair.
Yeah, I'd love to have the city involved because I'd love to see this event grow.
Yeah, yes. So, okay, all right. So it sounds like we have a consensus then to put that on the agenda for tomorrow night. And, and then, yeah. You have either, you can use that for scholarship money if people can afford to have it or however you do, decide to use it.
Okay.
Yeah, so know that money won't change hands. What we'll be doing is basically we're going to do a fee waiver of those.
Okay. Oh, I misunderstood that. I thought we were donating that thousand dollars to them. And then they could choose on how to do, what to do with it.
Well, you still have then all of the licensing, which that just works with staff. And what I was being is creative about it by simply just moving it into the occupational license line item. Then basically doing a sponsorship and then staff doesn't have to process those licenses, all those vendors.
Okay.
It's like a contingency move.
Okay, I was thinking maybe the donation was made and then some people who could absorb, who could take the cost. But this way it takes less staff work.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we'd have to process every one of them.
Councilor Nordoff? So are we, are we allowing the businesses not, are we, are we waiving the fee for the businesses that want to participate and have a booth at the community center?
So what we're doing is we are signing on as a sponsor in lieu of the grant. The grant will go to cover staff time. And therefore, under existing council approved ordinance, when the city then becomes a sponsor, we already have authority at the staff level per the ordinance to waive those fees.
Okay.
So what we're doing is we're helping them out and in non-traditional way, but trying to think out of the box here.
And just as part of this conversation, if this is something that your organization would want to apply for again, is that something where they could, when that cycle opens back up again to apply for revenue sharing? That that organization would know, like, hey, if we wanted to apply for twelve hundred dollars to pay for these vendor fees, they could have the opportunity to apply for that again and use it in the same fashion?
So has that date opened and closed yet or is it still open? Yeah, so.
Next fiscal year.
Yeah, which is, yeah, which again, when we get to the actual allocation, it always comes back to the council.
Okay.
It's, it's.
We could have a, just, okay, I'm just keeping it in the back of my mind for moving forward. Okay, so it sounds like we have a plan and a consensus from the council and you can work with staff on the details.
Perfect.
Okay, all right. Thank you for coming to see us. And all that you do for all the furry friends.
All right, take care. We'll follow up with a letter of the sponsorship.
That worked out good.
Yes.
All right, that's moving us down the agenda to number four on the agenda is the Herbal Choices Operating Hour discussion. This is on page three of our packet. And I think we might be hearing from some of our staff on this tonight.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of City Council. We've received a request from Herbal Choices to follow the state established open hours under the OLCC for the marijuana dispensaries. They noted eight AM to ten PM. The state's rules are actually seven AM to ten PM, but when we first updated our marijuana ordinance, we went from medical marijuana to include recreational. We had this discussion at the time, Coos Bay was nine AM to nine PM. Our medical marijuana dispensary hours had been prior to this, nine AM to eight PM. We had the discussion to a certain extent at that point and council decided to stay with existing hours at that time. Beyond that, staff has no opinion on this or recommendation. It's just when we initially did the ordinance, I think, which was in November twenty, we stuck with our previous existing hours.
And I heard you correctly that the states.
Seven AM to ten PM is actually the state's allowable. We couldn't go beyond that. We can narrow the hours.
Allowable hours for the state.
So from OLCC, they can't operate outside of seven AM to ten PM regardless. But we can further restrict those hours as we so choose.
Gotcha. Okay. Questions from the council?
Obviously, I'm not a user. Where, where is this located? Herbal Choices is one right across from the library, but it would affect all, I mean, I, I don't think we want to get into regulating people different hours. The original argument, because Herbal Choices has a store in Coos Bay and Reisport also, and other places, I'm sure, abandoned. The original argument was we'd be losing on their argument to us is we'd be losing on tax dollars because they close early. People go to Coos Bay, so then that goes into Coos Bay's tax stream instead of ours.
What is Coos Bay's hours?
Coos Bay's hours are currently set with state rules at seven AM to ten PM. At least that's what Roger said when he contacted us. They had been nine AM to nine PM.
Well, his staff doesn't have a problem, PD doesn't have a problem. I don't have a problem.
We do have our police chief here if he wants to comment on this at all.
Do you have anything more to add?
Okay.
Would we want to just make it comply with the full seven AM to ten AM?
So that's, that's what the allowable hours are for the state, and that would make sense to me. I think that when these were first being set, nobody really knew what exactly to expect or what to do. And so maybe they went with a little bit more conservative at the time. And now that things are continuing moving, you know, it sounds like Coos Bay has their hours till ten PM, so it makes sense to maybe match those.
At this time, of course, it's just a discussion item. We'd have to put it in ordinance amendment through because it's hours are stipulated by ordinance, which would be at your, wouldn't be tomorrow.
Yeah.
I presume it'd be your next meeting in June.
So it looks like, sounds like tonight you're looking for a consensus from the staff or from the council on if we would want to move forward with an ordinance adjusting the time to ten PM.
Correct.
Is there, is there a consensus to do that?
Well, if we're going to conform, let's go all the way like.
Oh, seven AM to ten PM. Rise and shine. What do you think down at this end here? Seven AM to ten PM, the allowable hours?
Yeah, yeah. Well, again, I think because our neighboring, if other neighboring towns are doing it, I don't necessarily understand why we wouldn't. And again, I don't want to lose tax dollars. Nope, we don't have to.
Councilor Nordoff?
Eight AM to ten PM.
I just don't want to read the rest of this thing down the road.
Yeah, I mean, here's the deal. Are you going to find anybody to work at seven AM? Probably not. That's their, they can sort that out. We're not going to be that busy at seven AM if you're worried about traffic flow.
We have a new unopened Green Line, which is on Virginia, and we already had to rate that because their first day, they were open at seven AM.
Oh, they were. Oh, maybe they are open at seven AM. Okay.
So they will open at seven AM if you allow them. Less confusion, sounds like.
Yeah, yeah. Got to capture those tax dollars in North Bend though, huh? I like.
I also value a chronic payment. So.
Councilor Gall, you know, it sounds like I'm hearing, starting to hear potentially a consensus from Councilor Nordoff was leaning more towards eight AM.
If everybody wants seven AM, I have no.
Yeah, let's go.
Okay.
It would put me back to sleep, so.
I think you're hearing a consensus from the staff that seven AM to ten BM would be something that would be.
Okay, we will work forward on the ordinance and start the public hearing process and bring that forth at a future meeting.
Okay. All right. Number five is council vacancy application process. We all had some homework to do. And that was to send our city reporter some of the questions that we liked. I think she's going to come forward with a presentation now.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. So on page ten of your packets, I have put together a list of the collective questions that everybody had sent me. On page thirteen lists the questions that were exact or similar matches from everybody, and you are also, each have your own color. So you can see where you rank and what questions most everybody, yeah, most everybody voted on. And on page fourteen through seventeen is a draft council vacancy application packet that I've put together for our city with those questions on there. If there is a consensus to move forward with those ten questions that were chosen.
I think it's a great, great thing that you had. It's all new homework.
Yes.
I think it shows that you just go with it and that's what I'd say. Get this process going.
Mm hmm.
Yeah. So what we would need would just be a, discuss a date on when to publish the application as well. If these are the questions we want to move forward with.
Okay, so, yeah, so, so, so the draft is on page fifteen. Sixteen and seventeen, does the council have any issues or concerns with any of the questions on the draft? Because now, so we have, what we could do is we could give direction to the council or give direction to the city recorder if we want to strike anything, add anything, or say it looks good to me and move forward with a date. Is there anything sticking out in here that you would want to just kind of one last look at them?
This is probably certainly, maybe not. I don't want to discourage people who haven't had any experience with public finance. So this, I'm looking at question six. Is there a way, if, if, if no, like just let somehow I can say if no is the answer?
Well, what if, what if the word, what if, what if it was changed to describe your knowledge with budgeting and public finance instead of his experience?
Oh, and then they could just say no.
That's none. I don't know. Let's ask the accountant here.
I just want to discourage somebody who can learn and go, oh, you have to have this when we get ushered through that process.
What do you think, Councilor Garboden? I don't want to call you the bean counter of the group, but describe your experience with budgeting and public finance. Do you think that is a question that's important, should be tweaked?
I don't really think it's all that important because like she, she said it's a learning curve. I mean, you come in here and looking at these numbers are absolutely nothing like you're used to looking at.
And you're not going to have the perfect answer for all these. So it's, I don't think a guy's going to get downgraded because you say none at this time.
Well, I know, right. I just, what I was thinking about was somebody reading this one, oh, yeah, I, you know, blah, 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 and then saying, oh, I don't, I don't, I don't know that. Okay. I don't think that's going to dissuade them from applying. What's that? I don't think I would dissuade them from applying. Okay, one question.
I'm just curious. Councilor Nordoff?
Yes, number, on, on question number four, it says city councillors are meant to put their personal priorities and values second behind the interests of their ward. And I believe there are some, there are some cities that have, you get elected, you know, on this spot and you run, you know, two or three people run for a particular part of the city. So I think we need to scratch that.
Well, or actually, instead of ward, it should be personal self or neighborhood, right? It's, it's, yeah, in, in other cities, they call it a ward. So if you change that, councillors are meant to put their personal priorities and values second behind their interests of their
neighbors, neighborhood.
Their own neighborhood or street, just change that to, yeah, instead of ward. So, so back to that public, do we, are we thinking, go ahead and leave six, which is describe your experience with public, with budgeting and public finance? Do you want to leave it?
Maybe we could, if, if any, if then, comma, if then, describe your experience with budgeting, public finance, comma, if any. Or if you have any.
Yeah. Okay. Were you trying to add something there, Councilor Garboden?
I don't even know if you need to put public finance in there.
Do you want to say, just, do you want to strike it all together? If we were to strike six, was there a close second to, you know, if we wanted to? Was there another close second question that was, when you're trying to, because you were trying to get it to ten?
Madam Mayor, I don't think that's what the councillor intends. I think he's bifurcating the question. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's like, describe your experience with budgeting, if any. He said, I don't think you need the and public finance portion in there.
Oh, you're saying keep, keep the question? Okay, but take out public finance, budgeting. Okay. Okay.
Otherwise, it's great. And then. Are you, are you interested in, are you interested in, because that's like, doesn't require them to go on record of, well, I don't have any experience, but are you interested in fiscal, fiscal matters, you know, that we have to do to run the city? Somebody has some experience with budgeting? But I don't want anyone to feel like it's an absolute requirement, you know? So, so I want to know that, but I don't want to discourage somebody if they don't have any.
I don't think they would be.
So we'll just, so by hearing you all correctly, just leave it, describe your experience with budgeting. Okay, if any.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't think there's any other issues that I'm seeing or hearing with this. I would be okay with moving forward as whatever works with your schedule. Should we need to say like how long it would be posted though or anything like that?
So there is a deadline here. So what I heard, so there's two things. So I appreciate Macy. She has really worked through this. This has been a project all on her own. Now that I've seen it, because we're getting to the end, the one question that I would suggest that you either tweak or even strike is number nine. Because that's really, you've, you've got three lines for a yes, no question. And so, and then other than that, providing staff a deadline when you want applications to come back.
Okay, you're saying you had concerns about question nine?
Correct.
And the, it says, have you ever attended a city council meeting or watched one?
It's just a yes, no question.
Okay.
Oh, right. So just a checkbox, yes or no.
No, they can say yes, and they're amazing, and I want to watch more of them all the time.
And our bands are the best.
Yeah, right. I'm a big fan.
Right.
What about asking, is there one here that, that asks, have you ever volunteered for a board or committee and describe? Rather, if, if we strike number nine?
Well, okay, I don't think we're saying it's just correct. We're not saying strike number nine. We're just saying it could be yes or no, could be a box.
Yeah, from a staff perspective, number nine doesn't get you anything. So yes or no question? Have you ever been, it's like, oh, yeah, twenty two years ago when I first got to the city, I came to one.
Well, that's good to know, though. Let's change it to yes or no.
As, as opposed to, yeah.
Three lines that you have to, instead of count. He's saying, he is saying to strike it. He thinks we should strike it. Oh, you are saying to strike it.
Yeah, I think that councillor, yeah, I think councillor Nordoff's question is actually more beneficial to you. Because you wouldn't know who has served on what committees in the past, so.
Change that.
Change, change it to, change it to.
What was that question that you proposed?
Yeah, she wants to know what you proposed. Have you ever volunteered to be on a city committee or a board, board commission or committee? What was your experience? That leaves it open, good, bad, or indifferent.
But we can say, what experience, if any, do you have on any city committee or board?
I mean, we do have the box there that says prior governmental experience, elected or appointed, where they can write that on the front page.
Yeah, but then they could talk about it, potentially, one that they liked or none didn't like.
We don't have, there's not a question here about. Guys didn't like the question, describe your vision for the future of North Bend?
Yeah. I mean, from, from a standpoint, you know, as, as a councillor, you know, hopefully the purpose of asking any question is that you're going to wait that, use it to actually make some determinations. And so, you know, like I says, I, I think Macy did a great job. But, you know, part of it is, is we got to figure out whether or not they're a registered voter. So, you know, once we get this, we actually, but you sort of kind of need to ask them that because they'd hate to go through that whole thing and say, oh, I have to be a registered voter. I have to, you know, be in the city at least a year. And so there is that. So then you, you really say, well, gosh, you know, do I really need their educational background and stuff? Are you using that? Because beside those base requirements, there's no experience necessary to be elected official. So it's like you have to determine what do you want in a candidate that'll make best gel with this governing body and the priorities. And so those, those are the questions that you really want to hone in, I would think.
No, we don't have any sort of question on here about diversity, equity and inclusion. And I don't know if it's appropriate or even how to ask it, or if that's something that the council would, would want to have. And I don't know if it's appropriate or even how to ask it, or if that's something that the council would would want to have. But I know I had noticed on other applications that there were questions about what is, you know, I can't remember how they were phrased. It was what is your? I don't think it was what's your opinion on diversity, equity and inclusion, but um, is that important to us?
To have, I think ultimately we'd want.
Make sure we have the questions in the packet on that question. Any questions? None. Um, on the previous packet, those questions were in there, but the council did not move any of those questions forward.
I just wonder if that's something that we're missing here, that if that's important to the council or not.
Apparently it was not.
Yeah.
None of us figured it.
And his remind me of the process, there there's going to be the application. Um.
So all the applications will come in um at the deadline, then they will all be photocopied and disseminated to the council members. And then we'll schedule a work session for you all to discuss those because the vetting process unfortunately has to be done in public. And then however you all come to a consensus um and a decision and apparently um.
Cause.
Picking cards is.
So that would be it, like, that's it. We would just be reviewing applications and then.
So you can interview.
We can't interview.
You 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 can set, it is your decision as to your process. So if you want to schedule interviews with them, that's strictly up to you. Yeah, and the whole process is public, yes.
Yeah.
And like I said, if you come stalemate, then there's a process for that, because as I shared with the mayor, you can actually get down the point of drawing cards.
Last one, let's get step one done.
Step one, and then I guess we could, well, or do we have to decide that now, though? Like, do we need to decide? So here's step one, you're filling out the application, step two.
Deadline for.
And then we could, if if, so what I'm hearing you say is at some point, if after we review the applications, if we say then as a council. We want to bring three of the six people that applied in to interview, and now we have another set of questions. We could do that.
Absolutely.
Okay, then I would be okay with moving this forward, but I'm just, yes.
Yeah.
Wondering, I, these are pretty. Generic questions to, yeah.
You want.
Okay.
Well.
Yeah.
We're 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 the ones that extend our values of diversity and inclusion. The fact that we're not asking them. What are you? What is your demographic data that paints you? Is a step to include. You know, we're not, that's not important to us per se. We we need you to be a citizen of North Bend. We need you to be a voter.
Yes, or registered voter, yeah.
That's the criteria. Any other thing can be on the map. You know.
So I think you're hearing from the council that we are okay with the noted tweaks that we need to make in here. Okay?
I know many.
And so we need a deadline on the application.
Thank you, Mason.
Oh, deadline on application. So if it, so looking at the calendar.
Weeks, ten days out after you.
I'm gonna get directed to one of them.
Ten days.
Yeah, we can have it published tomorrow. We have, of course. You know, and then we'll do a little blip. Market paper, all that. And so calendar wise, and then we have our deadlines ahead of the meetings. Um, so looking at this from a uh strategic standpoint. That would give us um, say, five o'clock on June seventh.
Is when they would be due.
That that'd have to be received. In fact, I'd make it four o'clock. Let's make it four o'clock. We'll make it four P M on June seventh.
Four O seven.
That it actually has to be received in house.
Okay. All right.
Right, um, Macy, do you want to quickly go back over and let them know what those changes are for the record?
Yes.
So what we're going to be doing is striking question number nine. And we're going to put in, have you ever served? On or volunteered on a board, commission or committee, or if you have any experience on any city committee or board? Um, number six, we were going to strike. The public finance part of it, so it would be describe your experience with budgeting and comment if any.
Yeah.
Sounds good to me.
And then the um, the neighborhood award thing?
Oh, yes. So number four, these city councillors are meant to put their personal priorities and values second behind the interests of their. Neighborhood. Or city. Right.
Yes.
Okay.
All good?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is we are going to talk about our council goals, page eighteen. You're our city administrator. Did you have some? Reporting out on this?
Yes, so Madam Mayor, council, um, this is everyone's input has now put in. Uh, our city recorder has compiled all of the council input. She has color coded it into rankings uh based on votes. Um, so on the first sheet, you see basically your first, second, third, fourth uh groupings. Um, everything beyond that either just had one or two, there's absolutely no consensus. Um, beyond that, really for consensus, you're usually four, five and six. And so um, these are your color coded goals. Um, you have before you um, the current draft version uh where we have. Um, in past moved them, we've moved them into three categories of live, work, play. Um, the first category of live would be enhance infrastructure. And so this would be protect public assets and infrastructure by making calculated and deliberate investments in our assets. So off of this priority sheet, we took the individual uh uh goals that we believe fell. Fell within that category. We then had the second, which is the work, which is fiscal sustainability. Leverage the operating position of the city to stage strategic opportunities for improving quality of life by maintaining physical practices. And again, same process. And then the last category was play, which is vibrant. Uh, be a vibrant community that uses its amenities and growth mindset to create a warm and welcoming environment to live, work and play. Now, is the council action or process? Um, you have the first, second, third, fourth. Certainly, the council can uh move one of those or all of those. But for instance, where you have an area that has six votes, um, you now have to set those priority. Um, because right now, they're all in there as if those are all equal priority. And the reality is, is not everything and every goal can get accomplished, especially when you start talking about staffing. Uh, financing, budget, all of that. And so within six, um, there's one, two, three, four, we need to figure out what is your priority within that grouping? Um, is the ladder truck your top priority? If so, that would be six A. Um, otherwise, six B, six C, six D. And then we need to do the same thing with the section of five, and then we need to do the section with three. But really, um, from a uh standpoint, does this have to occur tonight? No, you can take this home and sort of really go through the document. Uh, look at the draft that we've put together and sort of try to come back. And um, uh, letter those within those groupings, A, B, C, D, E, F, whatever it is. Bring them back to staff, we'll compile the consensus and we come back, or you can hash it all out tonight. That's up to you. But we've got to get the goals done and adopted in time for July first moving forward, so you have that amount of time.
Yeah, homework.
Yeah.
So, so you're saying within each color coded block. Rank them A, A through F or whatever, how many they are. Is that something that the council would feel comfortable taking those home tonight, really digesting them? Coming back and handing them back to, could we do that? Bring back our paper copy, or if you wanted to before you left tonight, rank them and then give them back to you?
That's up to the council as to what timetable or timeframe you want to do.
I don't want to push it too, I mean, we're already, you know, it's May, what's that? Yeah, so if you want to leave these, if 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 the council feels comfortable with taking these blocks, that makes sense. And, you know, A, B, C, D, or how many there are, rank them. Then I'm guessing our city recorder then will put them in a matrix and come up with the average. Is it eight? Would you rather have just numbers within?
There's a reason for the letters.
Okay.
Yes, because the letters are within, so it would be like, um, A, B, C and D. The top one would be like one A.
Let's make sure, uh, councillor Nara, did you need a clarifying? Did you have a clarifying question?
I have a question, so. Um, are are we boiling it down to four goals?
So if I'm hearing our city administrator correctly, we're prioritizing within each group. So these are in, so the yellow, blue, orange and green have been divided up into the work, uh, live, work, play. I love that. Um, and then within that, kind of the priorities.
Okay, so I guess my initial reaction to that is. I think, you know, the one of them, the yellow one got seven votes. Four of them got six votes, three of them got, you know, five votes. There's your priorities, and I'm wondering how many, how many goals are we establishing?
So within with, and maybe I'm not explaining that correctly.
Well, I don't understand why don't we do, just don't take the top ten? You know, the top, the top, you know, the yellow, blue and the orange, because those got the most votes.
And so we are, but within that block of green, that that is the green, let's say the green is um. Is that your uh live section is the green?
Uh, no, so um, uh, no, uh, do, you can't look at those as the categories. Um, if you actually look on this, you'll see that we have taken the goals and put them within. Right now, they're simply sorted alphabetically because we don't have a weighted priority within the group. Um, right now you have seventeen on the list that's three and above, okay? And so generally, um, strategic goals usually are somewhere of, you know, four to seven or six to eight. Um, seventeen's a lot, which is why we prioritize. Then you also then throughout the process have to decide, well, what what do we have resources for? What do we have money for? So for instance, I happen to know that the, you know, there's a thing, um, uh, continue the maintenance schedule of the fire department. That's great. Including the new ladder truck. Well, ladder truck isn't getting purchased this year or next year because, you know, that's a very expensive item. Are we working towards that and putting money in? Yes, and we'll continue. But that, so there's progress on that goal and there will be. Um, going down these, for instance, term in long term funding, um, that's looking for revenue streams. The next one, continue, I just addressed that, the pocket part. Um, that's that's a dollar sign cost item, so that comes back to the council at some point because you're gonna have to decide, you know, do we got the budget for it? Can we do it? Uh, vases and city parks, um, that's part of that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant that was just approved. Um, but we actually have to get that done, but it's on here as a priority. Uh, sewer fee increase, that's gonna have to go to the voter, so you all will have to take action to send that to the voters. Continue police department sustainability, that's a budget item, so when we do the budgets, you know, we prioritize that, um, but that's cost item. Uh, student um youth advisory council, um, uh, that one will have to be figured out. Um. And uh, uh, fish cleaning station at California Street Boat Ramp, there's possibility of a grant opportunity for that. Additional two hundred amp grant circle, we're going to move forward at some point with that, that'll be U R A. Uh, no, correction, we put ARPA money in that, so that'll come out of ARPA and we just work the budget to move forward, so that'll be there. Uh, the annex redevelopment, um, that's a big cost item, but I I found that fascinating that it was down all the way on number three. Is this governing body asked federal for four million dollars from your federal delegation, but that's way down on a three. Um, your continued goal of renovation repair at the library, that's a very cost item, but again, it's in the budget under U R A money. And we're colla collaboratively working with the library on grants and additional funding through the library. The pool open, um, uh, those conversations will be had as we move forward because you have a levy that's a timetable. So, uh, find property, develop future baseball and softball fields. That's going to be interesting because that's just as hard as trying to find. Land for the homeless or housing, um. You have uh your pilot lieu of taxes, that's the banger school, that's questioning whether or not that can happen and also um, uh, it also spans over into the airport for fee for services. Uh, your rebrand, uh, the July Jubilee, uh, review the charter, any changes to the charter will actually go to the public as a vote. And then, but otherwise you would have a uh council committee. Um, that would be made up of uh council members and members of the public. And then you have succession planning and cross training, which is really a day to day operational, but it's priority of the council, which is priority of staff. So that sort of gives you an idea, and then those were taken. And then um, from a concept that had come up at a previous meeting, we created sort of three buckets, which we called the the live, work, play. We'd invent that, you hear it all the time, but then we took that and sort of put descriptions that would encompass those. Those seventeen items were then put. Into what we believe, staff believes is a logical bucket. So there's three buckets, um, and then within those buckets, there's no priorities. Right now, it's um, just singly sorted alphabetically. And so we need to know with staff, what is the top priorities of the governing body, because that's important. Otherwise, we can just sort of take this and throw darts at it, and as long as we hit something, we're good. That I don't think is where you really want to be.
Sure, a dumb question, are we A, B, C and this, or are we A, B, C and that?
Um, it doesn't matter which one you do, this one or this one, if you're to do this one. Um, because it correlates back to everything, but if you want to go in on this one and say A, B, C, D. It's it's just as easy, so you decide which one you want to do. And. Um, and give it back to staff, but it correlates back to the same thing.
Okay, so A, B, C and.
The color one.
Within each section.
Yeah, until you run out of colors, keep going in the alphabet.
Yeah.
Yep.
That makes sense, so that we're all on the same page.
Okay, yeah, so for instance, under the blue. The most you're gonna get to is D.
Uh huh.
When you get to this, maybe orange? See, guys see things, is that orange?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so the most you're gonna get to is C. And then green, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, the most you're gonna get to is I. Obviously, the yellow, well, you're not gonna get, that's that's just one, so.
Hey.
It's A, it's it's it's, and so then that way, staff then will update this. So as you see it, um, we will re-rank this and then reorder it based on your priorities.
So I just, I just want to. Understand this, so so you made a comment about, you know, I don't know why complete the county annex redevelopment wasn't number one, because it's. All this stuff, so. The reason I I I'm curious about this shuffling because it's not number one for me because. So hurry up and wait for the government act, and we've made a bunch of choices and hurry up and wait for developers is not using our time here. So to me, that's why I didn't put that at the top, right? Like, there there's a bunch of. Do some things and wait, do some things and wait, so I I want to understand.
Sure, yeah, that's a great question. So it's not a a hurry up and wait. So for instance, um, uh, uh, prior to you coming on the council, the U R A. Um, uh, approved that I could engage a lobbyist. And so behind the scenes, there's a lot of staff work that goes into the whole plan.
Yeah.
That gets presented to the delegations. We don't hand it and they just do all the work. There's a lot of staff work. Uh, for instance, the entire budget, I'm working with developers who actually put the budget together that actually goes up and gets in the master. Application, so there's a lot of process.
Things, how do we make, how do we let it be known that? Continuing to do the footwork on the county annex redevelopment is very important.
You discuss it among yourselves and change some of your priorities?
So we can put that.
Yeah, that's why we bring it for, it's not a done deal until you all vote and say, okay, we're done.
I have questions too.
Staff's just trying to move it forward and keep it moving forward.
With it being this low, does that mean you'll say, well, we've got to work on the. Something that we got, you've advisory instead?
That's that's up to you. Um, again, you're given clear direction as to staff, as to what your overall priorities are. Um, which ultimately then I am judged on in my annual evaluation. Um, is there a lot of work to be done on the evaluation with with the annex? Yes, so you saw that.
So we should shuffle that forward if we really care about, this is what I'm.
That's kind of why I sort of raised my hand on it. Because you have to get through SHIPPO, we have to get through the salvage process. You know, there's a lot of work that is moving forward. In all of that, and then you all know that you've been in executive session, so you know that there's a lot of. Puzzle pieces be being moved, and so that's why I raised that hand on that one saying. Maybe there was a reason, so just because I don't understand, doesn't mean that you all understand it.
So. So that tells me we need to shuffle some things.
Well, if that's if that's what's important to you, and I know councillor Schultz has had her hand up for a few moments now, but. And I think the point that our city administrator is trying to make is it feel, might feel like hurry up and wait to us. But he's probably working that, working on something on that on a daily basis. Yeah, yeah.
Oh, no, and staff doesn't take it as an insult.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah. Yeah.
Different level than the work involved in putting the projects forward, so.
Yeah.
I wanna, I wanna do this in a way that makes it easier for you, the staff, to do the larger. Longer scale projects and I do not know how to do that.
So if we raise that to the top of that group and said, this, that housing is our, our priority. Um, then if he's trying to, and he, the city administrator and the staff are trying to manage their time and, you know, so many hours in the day, it's like. Invasion, invasive species might be not rising to the top because we're worried about getting housing in, he's gotta figure out based off of our goals. That's how his, their whole about, his whole evaluation is done, is based off of what we say.
If I want to. For that one item, pull that to the top and say that is as important as additional long-term funding for the city. How do I do that on my marketing?
Well, part of it is that three people voted for that and six people voted for the other one, so you're trying to trump what other people wanted. So part of it is that we're rating it so that we can come back and say, if that's your A and with all our As, maybe as a team, we want to move that up.
Yeah, so I would say how you do that is market A.
Yeah.
It's A, that's an A plus.
But the end result is that we're gonna want just like eight or nine of these, correct? So not only do we have to rate these, but eventually some are gonna potentially fall away.
Yeah, and I mean, you can always ask staff because I'm, I'm glad to give you, you know, an estimate of whether or not this can get accomplished. Uh, you know, sometimes a goal takes longer, sometimes it's not resources.
Yeah.
Um, sometimes it's a, um. You know, like for instance, like we can go after, like the fish cleaning, you know, the logical would be, you know, when the state grants come open, go after that. Which means, you know, we wait for it to come open, we then go ahead and submit it, then we wait. Then we get answer back and then usually we'll have a backup or contingency plan. But sometimes it's conundrum, so for instance, I will tell you, uh, Chief Brown is very busy over there working on a conundrum. Um, it's his birthday today and so when I, so when, when I got into the room, for instance, I gave him two items. Chief, can you hold those up? So he's got a bottle of Fanta and a bottle of stick and I said, by the time the meeting's over, do me a favor and figure out the riddle.
Oh, did he already?
Oh my god, are you Googling? Did you cheat?
It's a Fanta and a stick?
Uh huh. Alright, he came up with it, congratulations. Yeah, he used Google, so what, what's the riddle?
Uh, you make a fire truck with.
What is the chief?
Fanta, stick. Fanta, fantastic, good. Do you like Fanta?
So, so when we compile this and we have like A, B and C for the number six. If, if we end up saying A, B, C, D, our D is like, we decide we all have that as D, we could potentially drop it down further.
You as a governing body can actually engage in discussion and rearrange or move things, that, they're your goals.
Yeah.
Staff simply just keeps taking the feedback and moves it forward, moves it forward to ultimately the goal of getting finalized goals.
But it's good to know in my mind that there should be like potentially eight or, you know, less goals so that I can think about what's kind of.
Exactly, and so, so what happens is, I don't have a problem with there being seventeen on there, but once you're ranking them, those are lower priorities. If we get to them, that's great.
Yeah.
Um, sometimes we'll get some work on them, but it's more the ranking. Um, I think what happened, well, I actually know it happened the last evaluation. They just looked at the list of goals and thought, we're supposed to accomplish all that despite the conversation is, no, you can't accomplish everything.
Yeah.
There's not enough resources and money to do it. What you have to look at is what your priorities are at the top level. Focus on those in those three buckets so that you know that you're moving forward and that we're, we're on agreement. That those are absolutely what's most important to this governing body.
Well, and obviously if we get a four million dollar grant for the annex, everybody's gonna write a ten next to that, yeah, so.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, so write your A, B, C, D, E's and either tonight or to, just make sure that they're given back to the city reporter by tomorrow. Pat Paul's already done.
I'm already done.
Okay.
But don't we want to just keep them so we can have a discussion about it? Or are they just gonna combine that again?
Our, our task is to rank those.
Yeah.
Then they go, then where they're gonna come back to us and say, so you all ranked them. And apparently you don't care anymore about the baseball fields or whatever, you know?
Okay, so they'll, they'll read.
And that's when the conversation would happen. Yeah, okay, does that make sense, everyone? Okay, so don't forget to do that. So. Flipping, flipping, flipping. Okay, um, review the city council agenda for May twenty-third, that will be for tomorrow, okay? Tomorrow, um, there, um, we're gonna review the city agenda for tomorrow. The, one of the items that we're doing under ceremonial business is the proclamation for the Northland High School band. And there, uh, some of the kids that also participate in choir have a big concert at seven P M. So we did decide this is all about the kids and we want to make sure that we still include them. So they are gonna be meeting us here in the council chambers at six thirty. So if that fits into your schedule and you can meet here at six thirty, I'm imagining they will fill this room. So it's probably a good idea that we do that before anyways. We'll come, we'll do the proclamation for the, um, high school band. I told them under only one condition, they still have to do a TikTok with us and so they're trying to come up with that or at least a fun picture. Then, um, we'll have, we'll wait, we'll finish that, get them all out of here and then we'll have, so six thirty if that tomorrow. If that works for your schedule, if not, we'll see you at seven o'clock for the meeting. And after calling the meeting to order, we'll go through the other, um, proclamations, the golf team, um, for North Bend. Um, made it to state, so there's that, there's National Public Works Week. And, um, does your public works director, is he gonna get a fantastic stick too when we do the proclamation?
He gives a proclamation.
Okay.
And they're going to lunch tomorrow, so, um, uh, he can order Fanta.
Got it, and then we also have another, so we have, you know, your proclamation city tomorrow, so wear your best dress for all those pictures. Um, mental, uh, health, uh, awareness month as well. And then, um, to our city administrator here, I see you've got several items under the consent calendar. Did you want to speak to the Oregon State Fire Marshal grant at all?
Um, chief is going to speak to that one.
Okay.
Birthday boy.
Happy birthday.
He's fantastic.
You're fantastic.
Um, so real quickly, there's, there's quite a bit to this, but we're just gonna boil it down real quick. Um, the Fire Marshal's office has given us a grant that will help us to be able to put another person on our staff. We currently have two shifts with three people and one shift with two people, sorry, two shifts with three people, one shift with two people. Don't want too many numbers out there, so this is going to make it so we're going to have to full-time staff of three on each shift. Um, the grant is for three hundred and sixty-six thousand nine hundred and twenty-six dollars, I believe. Um, of that, the Fire Marshal's office pays a percentage for each year of a three-year contract, a co- three years. Um, the city then will pay the remaining balance and it comes out to about a hundred and forty thousand over the three-year period. And that's something that, if you look at all these budget analysis, I didn't do that. Our city administrator did that, this is way too many numbers for me.
Nice.
But, um, and that's one of the other thing that we work together with all the time. And then, um, also if you notice in there, uh, twenty-five thousand dollars of it are for other costs associated with the position over that three years as well. So that's his firefighting years will be paid for, it's more of his training or her. And, um, so it's part of the materials and services covered in that as well. So this is a, a huge opportunity for us, uh, going forward at the fire department.
So for the benefit of the, uh, council, before you can open questions, um, this is no different than COPS grant. Um, so that COPS grant was the same thing, it doesn't pay a whole, full freight, it pays a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Towards the actual position and then, so we budget for the difference, um, but it's free money. Um, and so this, um, allows us to, um, do this. Does this mean that we have to have this position for all three years? Yes. Does it mean we have to have it past three years? No, we can't physically fund it. It's no different than the COPS grant, so the goal is through attrition or, you know, through economic development, the goal is to try to keep it. But does that mean at the end of three years, someone's gonna lose their job? No. Um, not, not through, um, uh, uh, budgeting and, uh, any, uh, planned retirements and attrition, so no worries there.
Okay.
And I, I would hope that I remember to, to, uh, bring this deal up in public comment tomorrow night. I mean, council comment tomorrow night, just just to have it on the consent calendar. We need to keep everybody informed, but this is a pretty cool deal.
We can pull it from the consent calendar.
No, no, I'm not, no, I don't. Pulling that.
Okay, alright, so you kick them in the knees, remind them tomorrow.
I won't.
And so one nice thing about this particular grant, um, I've been working closely with the state fire marshal and, and her staff as well and, um. They have said that they need to get this money allocated out by the end of June. So they, they want to really get on it and get this money out and so, um, that's how we have it built into our budget for next year as well. Jeff is, is working on that, but we are being very, we're being sure that we get our money before we, we do anything.
Yeah, that's really great.
Alright, any other questions for the chief?
No.
Alright, um, other than that, um, we spoke about, um, adding to the consent agenda. There'll be, uh, C as in Charlie, uh, that will be, uh, the. Uh. The city.
Sponsor.
It's a dog park thing.
Oktoberfest.
It's, uh, it's our sponsorship.
Yeah.
Of, of that, um, in lieu of, um, uh, fees.
Yeah.
Um, which of course then allows, so we'll work, um, creatively on, um, uh, uh, that little item and get that published. Um, the second is. Uh, um, uh, there's, um, I sent to the council, um, you all need to do an appointment, Madam Mayor, to the, um. Hughes Bay North Bend Water Board's Budget Committee.
Yeah, we had a resignation, okay. Um, and I, uh, so can I take time to speak to that now?
Yes, because otherwise it's.
Perfect.
Yeah, it stays on the.
We had gone through the process of, um, talking about an appointment for a water board. I asked the council to, um, that, um, if they're okay, if I appoint, appointed the finance director. I know councillor Nordoff had expressed interest in being on the water board. Um, and so since we, and we do have a resignation, there's been some things that have come up where our finance director is not going to participate in that. So councillor Nordoff, I wanted to see if you were interested in doing to, there are one-year appointments from how I understand that, is that correctly? So it's not, it's something that we would review every year and I do believe in rotation of service and the different, but if that is something that you would consider.
Yes, I'd like to do that.
Okay, so I then to, let's see, so then tomorrow evening, um, if the council is in consensus with me, I will make that point, appointment. And I, I'm seeing heads nodding.
Yeah.
Everybody in, in, uh, notation, is that a word?
Consensus.
Notation.
Right.
So would you make that change for me?
So yeah, so we'll have a revised agenda then, there'll be two C, which is the waiver of the fees for sponsorship. There'll be two D, three D, uh, the appointment of councillor Nordoff to the, um. Fiscal Year Twenty-four, uh, Water Board Budget Committee.
And on that, then at that point, does the water board reach out to the councillor for?
Yes.
That and.
Yeah, we simply just notify them after the appointment's been made.
Okay.
And then they take it from there and communicate directly to their, uh, committee members.
And then we would hear, uh, on committee updates?
Um, uh, yes, yes, generally councillors that are on committees will report back, I believe their meeting. I think if I recollect correctly, they are June first and fifteenth and they feed you, so that's, I think that's what I remember.
There is a free lunch after all.
Nothing's for.
Just have to, okay, alright, so I will, um, okay, so. I'll be doing that under consent calendar then, so.
It'll be on consent counter, so we'll just simply update it and then as long as no one on the council has an issue with a consent agenda, it'll move forward as a consent.
Okay, I'm hearing consensus, so thank you. Okay. Get us some more of those cool mugs when you go to the water board too, or the glasses, those pint glasses are really good. Alright, um, alright, I think that concludes our consent calendar, correct?
Yes, the next item would be public comments and then you get to number five, public hearing ordinance two oh six seven. And our city planner will be coming forward to walk you through that. Um, we've had prior discussion, but this is the update and then your actual ordinance.
Since we're, we're, we're adopting the housing needs analysis, but making a statement that we. Want more.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
What they're saying.
Yes, um, and I can kind of keep this pretty brief unless you want me to kind of reread you my spiel from last time.
I don't think we need to hear the spiel again.
Okay.
The, um.
How many pages is your spiel?
It, it is three pages.
Um, yeah, with three hundred and sixty-one pages attached.
Yes.
Yes, we have it for our records.
Yeah, yes, um, so, you know, before you, it's gonna be a, uh, continuance of that discussion that we had at the last meeting. Um, we just needed to get our, um, public notice straightened out, or not public notice, but our, uh, agenda straightened out with, uh, actually having the public hearing on there. Um, it's the same documents with the addition of that memorandum that I passed out, uh, this evening, uh, showing us alternate projections, uh. I think it was point seven and one point two, uh, percent growth rates, uh, which show some different housing needs, um. Now, with the big caveat with this memorandum is we can't use it to make land use decisions, so we can't use it to expand our urban growth boundary or anything like that. But we can, you know, say, okay, next year or five years from now, we've grown, we've actually grown the point seven rate. We actually need this much housing, so it just gives us a better benchmark of where we are or to compare where we are and where we're going.
Okay.
Um, but other than that, it's the same exact documents that, uh, that were before you previously.
Okay, does any of the councillors have questions about this?
I, I like that, that we have one alternate demand which shows us the deficit. We really like that.
So we're doing the public hearing and then the ordinance?
That's correct, and the, uh, mayor will have a script for both, but yes, uh, it's land use, so it'll have the public hearing followed by the ordinance. And your city attorney will be online to help guide the mayor, uh, through the process if necessary.
Can we make those scripts in like eighteen-point font?
Yes, we could.
It's, they're not working.
Oh, no.
Can you, uh, that was a request, huh?
Oh, yes, yes, Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
Yeah, Macy, can you assist with that?
I just, I, 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 I'm struggling with new contacts and glasses, but the prescriptions is not right and it's like, it's making me nauseous to wear them, I still can't see. I feel like I have a tumor, I don't know what's going on.
No.
I do not have a tumor, but it feels like it. That's hard to read or unless, do I always have to be the one to read those? The ordinances?
Uh, no, you can actually, um, uh, relieve yourself at any time and handle gavel to your.
Council president.
Yes.
Very great. You might just sit here tomorrow night in case, that's just, it's a, it's a lot of ordinances and public, public hearings and things to read tomorrow night. So you can sit right here and I'll, I'll hand off a video.
There's no room over there, you.
Yes, there's. Yeah, okay.
Alright, Madam Mayor, um, that gets you to number seven, um, also, uh, public hearing and number eight, the ordinance for two oh six eight. Um, and these will be again, um, changes to your land use, so Mister City Planner?
And so this is, uh, um, broken out separately from ordinance twenty sixty-seven, um. And so twenty sixty-eight is all about the chapter eighteen of the North Bend City Code and it cover, that covers our zoning and land use, um. Section of our code, and so with that is the implementation of the housing production strategy. Um, and, you know, some of those changes that we were discussing last meeting about, um, how to add more middle housing.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and kind of alleviate some of the, the bottlenecks that developers have as far as designing new, uh, housing. So that, that, that is, and again, that's the same document that was before you at the last meeting.
Okay, right.
And they follow along with the housing analysis, like when code changing codes and making like mixed use easier.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, any further questions for our city planner? Okay, alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, so that gets us, uh, to number nine, this is resolution thirty-three thirty-four. Uh, we'll ask the public works director come forth, but as you recall, the council's previously passed and adopted its ordinance effective July first. That'll cover, uh, the requirements under House Bill thirty-one fifteen, thirty-one twenty-three A for, uh. Manor. And you now have a resolution before you, which is thirty-three thirty-four is a consensus of the council that will dictate time and place. With that said, Mister Dunham. That will dictate time and place. With that said, Mister Dunham.
Very simply, last minute, you adopted ordinance two zero six six, which is your camping ordinance. At that point, we had, council had established four sites, um. For camping as a start, that's in the form of a resolution here. Which includes McPherson up to California, California between Maiden, McPherson, Union between California and Connecticut, and Harbor Avenue. Um, so it's codified into a resolution, which you can change, add, subtract as needed, but. It's more nimble in a resolution than going through the ordinance process.
I think it's, yep, a good place to start.
A good place to start.
Review it again, you know, within thirty days after it was, you know, so by August first, I guess.
Do we have, do we have that in the plan that will get a status from staffers about how?
My council has already requested that, so it's an automatic add, um, once, once there's a consensus and a request of the body. That already happens, so that'll happen at your first work session in August.
Now, we don't need to explain why our terms are different at all.
We just get to choose them.
It's up to you, it's an act of the body.
Okay.
Yep.
Alright.
Alright, anything else for Mister Al? Alright, uh, uh, Mister Dunham's also filling in uh, for our Public Works Director right now, and so number ten on here. Is uh, the McPherson uh, tennis court resurfacing, and so Mister Dunham.
So the McPherson tennis courts are the most heavily used tennis courts in the city because of the most wind protected. They haven't been resurfaced for.
Long time.
Long time, I'm gonna say since the eighties, um. We also had a need for pickleball courts. Uh, we've had that expressed through our Parks Master Plan Survey and everything else. So Paul, not myself, went to uh, several, although he only included one in here. I know he went to several because I. Turned him on to Mister Borkwest and Mister Forrester to get people who do track servicing, tennis court servicing, to get prices originally. Um. To get tennis court resurfacing prices. He has a contractor that's willing to do it. He was the lowest price. Uh, although I don't have documentation in the file for the others he contacted. Uh, with an estimate of twenty thousand two hundred, um, with staff doing the pressure washing and filling the cracks ahead of time. Um, the ask is for not to exceed twenty-five thousand dollars, resurface tennis courts, which would include new nets. And uh, new striping, both in the pickleball format and tennis court format on McPherson Street Courts.
That's really great.
It looks like, it looks like the bill we have in person, though, is just a hair over twenty-five thousand.
The uh. I don't have it in front of me. The other item was for resurfacing at the pool, which isn't part of the ask.
Okay, okay.
It was fifty-two hundred or something like that for fifty-one, forty.
With the, and with the ones, the um, the pickleball, pickleball courts at the patio of the pool. Um, will people, they just can go and is that a separate entrance, or how will they be able to access to play those?
The, the surface doesn't. At the pool, because of the slope, doesn't fit very well with pickleball, and so we pulled that out of there. Mainly because there's a drain in the middle, and when you lay out the courts, they're about well-drained. About a two percent drainage, but just because of the um, pickleball is enjoyed by all, but it is a. One that as you age, a lot more people use it. And so we didn't really want to have a drain in the middle of a pickleball court, so significant other dollars would have to be spent to. Make this a bigger surface, so we're striking the.
Okay, not the pool area.
The pool application because of the hazards that exist on that area.
Question, yes, uh, councillor.
I have a question, um, there is a drinking water fountain there, and I think it doesn't work, and. What, would it be horribly difficult to get, get a?
That McPherson?
Get it, I don't know, maybe the line's broken or it's turned off somewhere, I'm not sure. Do you, do you know anything about?
I don't personally know anything about it, but I'll check it in. That's at McPherson, right?
Are you, are you, you're referring to the McPherson Court drinking fountain?
There's one right in front.
Okay. Um, any other questions about the pickleball, why can't I say that? Pickleball court, tennis court resurfacing. No other questions about that? That's gonna be right, a lot of happy people playing pickleball.
We got that email though about how it's not enough courts, and they say two courts is not enough.
I, I, I.
They're gonna like this.
Yeah, I mean, if you have a half a million dollars that we can spend on a couple more, that'd probably rise to the top of the list, but. Yeah, yeah, okay, um, but yes, I think we, this is not the end that we will see of pickleball. Number eleven, um, on the agenda is authorized to repair the combination of the sewer cleaner intake.
So, our combination sewer cleaner equipment, um. It's known as a Vactor, it's a big vacuum machine. We have two of them, nineteen ninety-eight, that the street department owns, um, which was sold to them. By the way, Sweater Department, we have a back on. Which is two thousand twelve, two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, um. Which we are required to have to clean our sewers and video. We're on a schedule basically every seven years, we have to clean every sewer in the city in our bent. Wastewater's required to have. The vacuum equipment, you see a lot of them, not a lot of them, you see a few of them used around town, um. By excavators, because they use them to delicately excavate, uh. So the one that's used by the street department, long story short, there's a combination of two things, primarily sucks catch basins, cleans catch basins. And is used as a hydraulic excavation machine, so you're throwing water and rocks through that thing at high velocity. Uh, the pickup tube on it is pretty well worn, we tore it apart. We had put some Band-Aids on it, which are tearing, of course, and uh. So staff looked at, you know, what are we gonna do with this equipment long term? It's right at five thousand hours, um. A new one is not that we necessarily need to, a new one's six hundred to six hundred and twenty thousand dollars, like buying a fire engine. Um, the machine is very serviceable, it's been used, we haven't had a lot of problems with it yet, as far as repair drills, we rebuilt pony motor. And the other option is you can buy like the vacuum trailers, but this is also a jet rotor, so we can clean lines with it, which a vacuum trailer you can't do, you can add. Um, to a new sweeper, you can add the vacuum pickup tube. The trailer and the vacuum tube on a new sweeper options are eighty to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Um, and they don't, they're not as good a piece of equipment as this is. Um, so for a low, low price of five thousand five hundred and eighty-four dollars and eight cents, we can buy the parts to put, replace the tube. On this, which is the worn-out piece at this time. Staff's already got it torn apart, they can somewhat put back together, so no. Additional costs there. Well, that's our request.
Okay, alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Guys, okay, cruising along here to the next, that was eleven, um, and then. Tomorrow night, it'll be twelve, which is action if any resulting from the executive session. We'll have the city administrators report. We'll have uh, committee reports, and our newly formed committee met earlier today, so we'll have a committee report. An ad hoc committee, yeah, so that won't be a committee. And you'll have a, a fire committee tomorrow, so we'll go through the. Oh, yeah, you and I are at a seven-thirty morning meeting tomorrow. I'm gonna be on Zoom, okay? Um, and then other business, and then we'll have the adjournment tomorrow. So back into. The work session agenda. Um, we will review the U R A agenda for tomorrow night. And we have a copy of that here, so tomorrow night we'll call the order, we'll have the approval of the minutes. While the executive directors report, any public comment, and then we could potentially have any, we could have action resulting from the executive session. And then the adjournment, okay, so that's our U R A meeting tomorrow night.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Um. On tomorrow, staff is not anticipating any other business. And we are not anticipating any action out of executive session on the city agenda. We are expecting um, action if any resulting from the U R A executive session.
Okay, alright, so we'll make a little abstract there. Okay, so, um, well, then I believe that takes us to nine, which is the executive session for this evening.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
Alright, so there's three listed, they're placeholders. Um, the first one, which is U R A, uh, that's one ninety-two point six six oh two E, that will move forward. Um, the second one was city council, one nine two point six six oh, that will not move forward. The third one is one nine two six six oh two D, consult deliberations with persons who have designated care out. Labor negotiations, that will move forward. So the two, the first one. Uh, will be a property, U R A, and the second executive session will be labor negotiations. Although we'll take the labor uh, first, uh, so that we can get our labor attorney in and out of here.
Just got really complicated for me really quick. Is, are you saying E?
Okay.
Tell me which ones to read, is it E, H, and D?
No, we're crossing out H.
We're crossing out H. No H.
You are crossing out H.
Okay, perfect. So how about this, can I, how would you?
And so what I would suggest is go ahead and I'd recommend a brief recess.
Yep.
And then come back for executive session, and then your meetings will adjourn, and so for the benefit of the public, there'll be nothing additional tonight outside of executive session.
Okay, so I'm sorry, did I hear you say, go ahead and recess now, then come back into, then when we go back to the recess, I'll go into executive.
And then come back for our executive session.
Okay, alright, we'll take a five-minute recess, and then the council will go into executive session.